I call this planning board meeting to order Wednesday, August 8. We have Barbara, Sarah, Laura, Tara, and myself. So we have a quorum. Also attending Bill and Max and our trustee secretary Susan. Okay, so adjustments to the agenda. I would like to make one because I have a few things on the minutes. So in the interest of the site review, I would prefer to postpone the minutes to the latter part of the meeting so we can go ahead with the proposal.
Radical.
I know. Gee. You know? Every once in a while, I just like to step out into the new territory.
So where's it gonna go?
After five. Yeah, after five.
Okay.
Okay?
Sometime.
Yeah. Before the ordinances? Okay. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Any citizen comments apart from the application we're considering today? There being none, let's move to new business, which is the site review for change-of-use retail at 760 Atlantic Highway. Gentlemen?
Would you like us to take one?
Please do.
All right.
So now, do we still have a quorum?
We do. We have four.
Okay.
Please, I know you were here last month, but if you could please do a quick review and any changes to additions.
Yep. My name is Tim Carlson, and I'm representing Midcoast Herbal Solutions, and this is my son Eric, and he's representing Coastal Compassions. And what we'd like to do is use part of the building that is up at the Midcoast vape shop currently. They're only using half of the building. We'd like to divide that off and open up a shop where we can service medical patients out of that part of the building.
And you and the vape shop are two different enterprises.
We are.
And this is coming in front of us because it...
Well, I approached the town and I asked...
Is it a retail change-of-use thing or what? Why is...
It's both. Right? The half that they're talking about was so far, right now, is used for vehicle sales. So they need the change-of-use first.
Right.
And then the second part is even without the caregiver aspect, they're still selling accessories, correct?
Correct.
So that's the retail part.
Right.
Okay. Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine. Again, we are separate from the Midcoast vape shop, and we would be selling accessories for the industry. And we would be meeting certified patients, and we would check those cards before they even entered that area.
So you're not Midcoast vape shop?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Midcoast vape shop is owned by Bob Emery's son.
Okay.
Robert Emery, I think it's the third. Totally different.
So, and how is the accessories that you're selling different from the vape shop? Just to be clear.
Vape shops are basically geared towards the tobacco industry. We are geared toward the cannabis industry.
Okay.
And then that's what we would be geared toward.
The vaporizers they sell at the vape shop are usually mixtures with nicotine in them. And the different vaporizers that we would use actually would either have cannabinoid content in the extract, or they would be the actual vaporizers that you would need to add your own dried flour to to use.
Okay. All right. So as part of this as well, you are asking for a waiver on...
Yeah.
Yep. Based on it being previously retail approved, et cetera.
Yeah, it was geared under the automotive, right? Before?
Mm-hmm.
Well, yes, your half, that's not the vape shop.
So this 18 by 35-foot area to the left of the building is all gonna be your space?
Correct.
You have your own entry?
Well, we'll be adding an entry, and that's the only thing we'd be doing to the exterior of the building is just adding an access point. And then we'd have like a retail area, and we'd have an office area where we would meet with a patient. There's another idea that we have, and I was talking with Maxwell about, and he says, don't bother submitting it because you really don't need to get into that much detail. But what we may do is just do an off, like a reception area where they'd show us a card, like maybe through one of those slit windows. Once we know that they're verified, then we'll allow them into the open area to access the medical.
So you have to go in front of the code enforcement officer to get a permit to do this, these walls and whatnot?
The door.
Because I'm just wondering if you need a second door, means of egress?
And if we did, we would do that.
Yeah, you'll check on that.
Absolutely would. And we'd probably be putting up a sign as well, but that would obviously be approved through him first.
Okay.
And this parking, were you raising your hand, Susan?
No.
Okay. Was this park, is this parking kind of parallel to the building in front?
Looking at the overhead view there, our parking section would be to the left of the building. Kind of on our side of the building, there's quite a large amount of gravel there. A lot of grass has grown in, but it used to be gravel, and we've just turned it back into a gravel parking lot.
When I drew this out, I was just drawing to show that there is ample parking out front of that building, but it also does wrap around the side.
And I read somewhere about possibly having some events, like feed the public kind of things.
Oh, you know, we were just throwing out the idea of maybe getting to know the public, just do like a, you know, barbecue or something like that, but that's not a mandatory thing.
Yeah.
Kind of like a customer appreciation day or something for all the customers that have helped us get to the point where we're at now.
So the only thing about that, we'd have a lot of people, maybe around a dinnertime hour, perhaps conglomerating. Just going by, it's, you've got this kind of curved driveway. You've got an in and an out, you know, U-shaped driveway, and I'm not really sure how far back from, anyway, it could get busy there, and it is on Route 1, and so do check with the town first before you have an event like that because the parking and the curb cuts make me a little nervous, actually, about having a lot of people on this property on Route 1. But it's not really my business to, you know, I'm just raising that as something for you to be aware of.
And if it was ever an issue, we just wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not looking to stir the pot with anybody. We just want to bring good light to this type of industry that's helping a lot of people.
Well, I guess in my view, the issue is that is having these events part of the application or not? Because it's mentioned, so the implication is that, you know, if we're making that approval part of this application or not, seems to me is important.
It should be part of the application.
Okay. So, okay.
I have a question.
Please.
You say it should be part of the application.
No, it should not.
It should be.
This is kind of why I also explained the interior work, Alex, and didn't have to include because you were talking about the very specific integrity of how you do it. They're talking, this is supposed to be about the concept of your application, not every single minute detail.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Is this from these folks?
Where did this come from?
That came from an abutting property owner that I can read and get into when we get to that part of the review.
Okay.
So this is not part of their application?
That's not their application.
Ah, okay. Okay, now that makes more sense.
I have a quick question about the last few pages. I was a little confused. I understand page 14 looks like a detail of the building of the previous page 13, which shows the building in relation to the site.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Right.
So what I don't understand is page 12.
Do you get bank numbers?
Up in the upper right, they're written in...
This was given to me by Mr. Emery himself.
Okay.
This is what he received when he purchased the property.
Okay.
So I just added this with it.
Oh, I see. So...
There used to be another, something else was that on this? Car wash on the side, I guess?
So there was a building that's no longer there?
Yeah, correct.
There's just a vacant foundation on the right side.
Oh, okay. And then he may have sold off the lot to the left. The boundary line looks a little bit different to the left-hand side. If you compare page 13, the boundary lines compared to page 12, looks a little different. Okay.
Okay.
But in reality, we don't need page 12 because it doesn't...
You very well may not, but I submitted it because...
No, that's fine. Absolutely fine.
I meant to overkill more than not.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood what they were.
This point here might be this point here, and then it maybe makes more sense.
No, if you look, not by the orientation of the building, you can see that this, if you cut this off here and you blank that, that's what's left is this.
Just for clarification, keep in mind that illustration was meant to describe the entrance points.
Yep.
It wasn't. The rest of the detail in terms of property lines was incidental.
Sure. Yep. Okay. So this is gone. Okay. Okay.
So I don't have a problem with the basic concept of having this type of retail as part of the space. And that's what they're coming in front of us for, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't see really any issues. Business is business, and it's...
Yes. It seems relatively straightforward. Before we get to the abutter input, then, is there any more, any more questions or comments from the board to the applicants or from the applicants to the board?
I mean, this point, so...
Yep.
Okay. So let's talk about this abutter input. Have you seen this?
I've not.
Are you aware of this? Do we have a copy we can?
I think it's appropriate to... Ted should have a copy if he's not here. It should be right underneath his minutes or the agenda.
Just so you know what we're talking about. Thank you. Talking about it. Okay, can you review that, this with us, Max?
So this comes from, and I'm going to probably mess up the last name, Bob Weintraub.
Okay.
From Main Top Mills.
Yeah, okay.
He was curious about this application.
From Main, from what?
Main Top Mill. It's right there on the...
At the top of the hill.
Yeah, it's right there.
On the opposite side.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Sort of far right underneath Ralph's Homes.
Okay.
He was curious about this app, he was, when I sent out the notices, I guess he didn't get one, but I sent one to Precision Tool Repair as well as the owner of that lot in general, so I don't know how Main Top Mill was not included in that, but regardless, no. Well, he asked questions about this and sent in the page you all have as well as sort of an email that I'll quote in a minute. But his main questions were, concerns were about just having another retail spot along Route 1 with the curb and parking concerns that Barbara mentioned earlier, and just if the hours of operation was one of the questions. I'm just repeating what's at the bottom there. He believed this was a cannabis dispensary, which, or a retail, a recreational retail. He was confused because the town voted no on that back in June, which Tim and Eric don't fall under because this is medical, and those rules don't apply until October when the amendments that were just passed get implemented. And then just other safety and traffic concerns that.
Okay. So let's, well, let's take the first one. Says four retail businesses at this location. That isn't the case, correct?
Two.
It would be two.
Yeah.
But the second one was already approved, which was car sales, correct? Or is, are we considering this to be the vape prop plus...
Yeah. The car sales is our, they're replacing...
Replacing the car sales retail. So the add is medical marijuana caregiving at that site.
Correct.
But it's not four retail businesses, correct?
It's really two retail businesses.
Right. It's really two.
Well, no, he meant four as in in that red...
All these different boxes.
In this whole space?
Ralph Holmes. He's talking about this section of Route 1.
Oh, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
This red zone, is this his opinion of being dangerous with excessive speeds and no traffic control? Or does the police chief also have information that this is dangerous as well?
I have not heard from the chief that this is...
So this is his opinion?
This is his...
Okay.
Okay. Or the DOT for that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I think it was considered in the Route 1 study that this is one of those points that accidents happen when they come in from, go over one.
Right. Sure.
Okay, so that was an existing business. The main DOT already knows about it. They're not changing any, the in and out, so it's really, and Route 1 is our commercial business zone. And we do have, what, we have 250 feet of frontage anyway?
Mm-hmm.
So it is a good point. It does, you guys don't own the building, right?
No.
You know, at some point, especially since you do have potentially parking on the left side of the building, at some point, if this gets a busier and busier spot, maybe the owner needs to look at really how to make the parking really crisp and so everybody knows where they're going. Because right now, it's kind of a little amorphous.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest, that would be the biggest issue in my mind as well.
But we can't make you do it, but it's, you know, it's gonna be a safety concern.
Yeah. Well, because mostly DOT is not typically thrilled with more than one. If I, Bill, if I can, my recollection is that the DOT prefers, likes one entrance per, and exit per site.
If you're getting a permit new, yeah.
Yes.
Typically would like just one, unless it's an excessive amount of traffic.
Right. So the idea that actually you have this amorphous, which is sort of, sort of an in and out at different spots, is probably not their favorite.
Yeah, both of these activities, they are pretty low volume.
Oh, yeah. Right. And in fact, in defense, I understand that that has, there has been accidents at that site. I mean, personally, I pull out of Old Wood Run all the time, and the sightlines are really good, you know? So I, from that standpoint, it's not a bad, it's not a bad spot in that there's plenty of distance of sightline on either side, which I'm assuming is why DOT would have approved these in the first place.
But if you're coming from the other side, the angle is against you.
From the other side.
If you're coming from their property or Libby property out, the bend is in the opposite.
Oh, a reverse bend from there.
Yes.
Correct. That's a good point.
But that's not our, this isn't our jurisdiction, so we shouldn't probably discuss highway design right now.
No, I don't, yeah, I agree with that. I don't see...
Now, what this says, caution signs before the businesses, what does that comment mean? There should be caution signs? Or what does that mean?
That's just a suggestion he was making.
Okay. Is that what these black dots are supposed to be on the...
I'm not sure what the black dots are supposed to be.
Okay.
I feel those are either incident spots or, or suggestions for, it might be signage. I'm not sure.
Unclear.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, as you end, you know, both ways on Route 1, you can visibly see the entrances. None of the entrances are hidden there, so...
So he brings up some very good points generally about this whole area, and it might make sense for down the road to be, you know, looking at it, but I don't think it can slow down our application at this stage.
Since it's been previous, yeah, I don't, I don't see any basis on this to, to not...
What do they mean by clean air regulations?
I think he's under the misinterpretation that we're gonna be growing there or smoking there or something.
Yeah, there will be no consumption on that site.
There will, there will be no consumption whatsoever. There's no growing.
Later in the parking lot and smoke, I think that's...
Yeah, the consumption was one of the questions he did.
There would be none.
Yeah, there won't be any consumption on site.
That's not what it's about. They take their products home.
Yeah.
And the air, clean air regulations, he's probably thinking we're growing there or something. There's no growing there. We have a grow facility.
Don't let him in. Look at him.
You don't see that every day.
If he's a yes vote, let him in.
This is Tara's seat. This is yours. That's yours, yours.
That's why I'm here to vote.
Good job.
I need to leave that door unlocked now.
That is Ted's entrance.
Yep.
Ted, you know how to make an entrance.
It's very consistent.
Walking through fire.
Ted, they stole this from you. I'd like to return it.
Thank you. Whatever.
Go ahead, Sarah.
The clean air and smoke pollution issue is taken care of with the smoking laws in Maine because they cover vaping, right? So they're really, that's not an issue.
I actually brought this up to Stan, the CEO, and he's asking the Maine State Marshal about this already, so I'm waiting to hear from him on that.
But you're thinking it has to do with growing? The growing process? No.
No, just the consumption.
That's not what I meant. I just meant consumption.
But there's no consumption at the site, though.
No, I, I know, I'm just...
But for vaping.
Right. And I'm, I'm just pointing out that the main laws for vaping are same, the same for smoking. The same laws apply for both.
That's what we're, Stan's checking.
Yeah.
And marijuana consumption while driving would come under the impaired driving regulations in any case, so it's not something that we could arbitrarily impose on this as a business, I don't think.
Yep.
A measure in a scientific manner.
Hmm. So...
And clean air regulations, I don't see how that, I mean, the cars are making more pollution than the vaping was, right?
Yeah.
He might have thought it was good they were gonna perform a different activity with it.
Yeah. Yeah. So is it, not necessarily is part of this application, ought there to be any follow-up with the, with the DOT? I mean, as you said, these are reasonable concerns from that area, but how would that, how would we even approach that?
There is no, you know, really reason to follow up at this point.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we would, we would look at that in terms of if, if the activity was going to be a high-traffic generator.
Like a restaurant or something.
Or we would have more than 50 vehicle trips each hour.
Then we'd ask that they go to the DOT for approval, but in this case, we don't have that.
Right.
Yeah.
And none of those businesses that are on this map seem to be high-volume.
No. Fastnell, who was there, one of the previous tenants, probably had higher volume of traffic only because they had some trucks going.
Right.
Even they, they didn't produce a lot.
Well, and when it was, there were attempts at that building that's now offices to be a restaurant, so potentially there could have been more traffic there.
Right.
But now that's offices, and that has very low, very low level of traffic.
And that's where the question mark is here.
I think that's the building with the question mark, isn't it? Is, where the, that's the offices that we approved.
It's the insurance office.
It used to be a restaurant, the insurance offices.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah. On weekends or whatever, that generated more traffic as a restaurant.
So your typical, I mean, your traffic, obviously for your part of the, you know, the accessories that you would be selling could be more, but you're limited to five people each for your caregiving, and that's, how often do you typically meet with your...
It varies.
Every few days, yeah.
Every few days? So that's maybe 20 cars, you know, 10 twice a week, 20 cars a week.
Yeah.
At that site.
Probably.
We would probably estimate probably 30 vehicle trips per day.
30? Okay. Per day?
But that's an in and an out.
That's still, that's, that's pretty...
Your peak hour.
That's generous. Yeah. No, but I'm just saying, that's still, that's, I think that's a generous number, and it's not, not hugely high.
That's an impact of three homes.
Okay.
Typical 10 per home, so it's a very...
Ah, okay. I'm doing too many errands. Okay. So any other questions or comments on this?
I make one comment.
Yes, please.
Do you have the patients lined up now that you're going to be using?
Yeah. Most of our patient base is in the Rockland area.
Okay. But they, they are absolutely, you've already identified them already?
Some of them know about it, yes. Some will travel, and some, because I live down in that area, I'll be taking care of those down there.
I'm just trying to determine whether the number of patients using that are gonna be rising dramatically or they're already identified.
Well, I can only do so many patients anyway.
Exactly.
I'm only allowed five.
Yeah.
He's allowed five.
Yeah.
So I'm not seeing that it's gonna jump.
But I think what Ted's asking is, do you both already have five each already?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So you're already full?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Thank you, just so I was determining.
Okay.
Okay, I, I vote that we, well, I...
Make a motion?
I make a motion, thank you. That we...
Go ahead. You can make your motion.
Oh, is there more stuff?
You can go ahead.
No, I just have his email attached just for comment, but that can be done when you're closing on comments, like I always do.
Now I'm confused. Okay. You have an email that comes, that goes with this?
Yeah, he had, he had something along with it that I'm, I will just read when we get to...
I think we should hear it now.
Well, we should hear it before we have the motion to...
All right. Email reads, "The intersection of Route 1 where 760 Atlantic Highway resides is very hazardous and increases in entering and exiting traffic along this section needs to be addressed. As one of several businesses on Route 1, I'm not comfortable with the current road safety signage and control. Adding a medical marijuana dispensary to this location is not one I would be comfortable with due to traffic on Route 1. Should this use be approved by Waldaborough voters, location should not be on Route 1 unless an existing strip mall with proper traffic and parking controls." And that was from Bob Weintraub.
It sounds to me like he really thinks this is a dispensary, like Tommiston Head or Auburn has, where there's hundreds of people going in and out.
Yeah, they have unlimited patients.
We don't have that.
Yep.
We don't have that. We're not even close to that.
And just so there's, people are aware, you're right, this isn't a dispensary, this is caregiver, and in our ordinance, a dispensary would be allowed in that spot, but it's...
Because it's commercial Route 1?
It's on Route 1.
Right. But I think, so I do think it needs to be clear then, as part of our discussion and approval of this, that this is 10 people maximum for medical caregiving, so there's a cap on the amount of traffic that would go in and out.
Well, I don't think you should specify 10 because, say, in two years, the state makes it 12 and they...
Well, actually, they are going to change the law this fall.
Correct.
We're only allowed to grow so many plants, but because you can have five patients right now, if you lose a patient, let's say he was my patient and he wanted his card back and he wanted to go down the road or he was moving, I can get her as a patient now, all right? And if she wants her card back, then I can have him. So essentially, you could have seven in one week, but it doesn't really happen that often.
Yep, I got you.
After October, they are changing the rules so that you're no longer limited to the amount of patients, but they're going to keep the cap at the same amount of plants that we've been able to have, and you'll be able to serve as many patients as you can with that plant count, but we're significantly lower than... A dispensary can grow unlimited amounts, thousands of plants. We can have 30 each.
That's it.
So you can only supply so many people with 30 plants.
So it can only, it won't, it's not going to be, it's not going to be like this gentleman's got in his mind that it's going to be. We're not a dispensary.
So you have 30 super plants, and what do you think is, if you, everything goes well, agriculture, this is what it never does, what's the maximum number you can handle with 30 plants?
Well, if they all bought a gram.
Yeah, it would depend on how much.
It depends on what they buy.
Well, but just average it.
They buy two and a half ounces at a time. They buy it at two and a half ounces at a time. It's not going to last you very long.
Yeah. It really would depend on what they buy and how much and how often. Every patient's very different in their amount of consumption.
So would your, potentially, your number of patients double or...
I don't think you'd ever see more than 20 people at that place.
It would never be busier than Highbrow down the street because he's doing the exact same thing, so as busy as you've ever seen his parking lot, I wouldn't ever foresee it being more busy than that.
I've driven by here a lot, and I've never seen more than two cars at his parking lot at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, the whole process, you know, for patients to come in, it usually doesn't take very long and you don't, because of the value of the product, you don't really need to see that many people compared to like a hot dog stand or something where you're only getting a dollar apiece, you know what I mean? So I really wouldn't anticipate heavy traffic.
Where is Highbrow?
It's right down 32.
Right around the corner there. Just behind Dunkin' Donuts.
Yep, on the other side of the street from Dunkin' Donuts.
And like I said, I've driven by here a lot. I've never seen more than two cars at a time in his parking lot.
And your business is limited by how many plants you can grow?
Currently, it's limited by how, yes, I'm limited by plants and patient count. So I can only sell just so much.
But can't you buy product from someone else that's growing?
Not until after October. They are going to allow that after October, but we don't have any intention because we like to make sure that our own quality control, we're very strict with no pesticides, no chemicals, no excess foliar feeding, fertilizers or anything like that, and because there's no state mandated testing at this time, we like to just ensure that our product is up to our quality standards. So we don't, we've never outsourced before and we don't plan on doing that. So we'd just be producing our own product.
How many ounces or grams do you get from each plant?
It varies depending on the strain. They're kind of all over the place, but you can get anywhere from four to 10 ounces per plant.
Can I make a motion now?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as written for creating additional office and, what did you call it?
Change of use.
Change of use.
Change of use for this, for the Midcoast Vape Shop, yeah.
And that events are not part of the application?
And events will not be part of the application process?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, so, and what's written here includes the waivers from the previous use, and you said for the second door and sign would require CEO approval. Okay? Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have one little comment.
Yes?
Bill, will this be defined clearly enough to be specific in the limits as to what we're doing? You don't see them being able to exceed these limits legally at all. We'll have some control of those.
What the permit states is that it's being authorized for a retail caregiver operation pursuant to...
State regulations. Just wanted to be sure it was in there. Thank you.
Now, as the state law changes, like they described, that will impact their operation, but our approval is just to medical caregiver exclusively.
And would we have the chance to be positive and negative depending on what the state allows? Could we be more strict than the state allows later on?
That gets a bit tricky.
Thank you.
And that depends on the state law. I'm not sure I can answer that authoritatively, but I think it would depend on whether or not the legislation allows you to go back to municipalities.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Sometimes they do that and sometimes they don't, so I...
But we can limit recreational...
Well, yeah, that's why I say this, we're permitting caregiver under the medical marijuana legislation only. It does not allow the sale of recreational marijuana. Currently, the town, the law states there's now an opt-in provision, so if we want to allow recreational sales, ex growing, the town has to affirmatively put it in the ordinance that we allow that, and Waldaborough is not going to do that, so that would not be permitted in town.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, I didn't understand the motion, Barbara. You said the change of use for Midcoast Vape Shop is what I wrote down. I think that's not right.
It's...
The property next door to Midcoast?
It's, this is happening within the Midcoast Vape Shop building, that the medical marijuana caregiver facility and offices is going to be part of that complex. Is that right?
You're changing use from Bob's Auto Sales?
Change of use for retail auto sales to and access, to medical marijuana caregiver and accessories.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The motion was not seconded to by nor by Laura. Thank you.
No problem. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you folks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And you have one for us to sign? Something for us to sign, Max, at some point?
Yes.
Okay. I'm absolutely fine with that.
Do we get a signed copy of you sign?
Yeah, I have him sign this and then I can send it to... Provo.
Alex always leaves when the fun's going to start.
Barbara, I'll just sign right there.
We all got a copy of it.
Yeah, you all got a copy. This is just going to be the town copy on file. It's signed right there.
In a case like this, Max, would you get back, would you guys get back to the butter and like at least explain to the butter what our rationale was, or you just leave it be and it's whatever?
You can watch the video.
You can watch the video, okay.
Yep.
All right. No, I just didn't know how, whether we ever, you know, okay. You know, I don't like to leave, I just think that we didn't, you know, I don't, what I don't want is for people to think that we ignored their input. Yes. Yep. Today's the eighth, yes. You're welcome. Good luck. Okay. So we had moved the minutes of the last meeting. Oh, is there a pre-application tonight?
There was going to be. Unfortunately, her plane got canceled, so she's not able to make a time.
She was flying in for a plea application. That's special.
Well, she lives in the area. She was just, yeah, probably trying to escape the heat.
Oh, okay.
Does that mean it's going to be a real application or a pre-up next month?
It will probably be.
Still be a pre-up? Okay.
It's going to take them a while to pull that application.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to that. So then, we have minutes of the last meeting. I have a couple of things on it, so...
Oh, do I have to sign anything that I was here? No, okay.
No.
I'm learning so much, Bill. I'm learning so much.
It'll already be on record in the minutes on the video, so...
But if he voted against it, you'd have to sign.
Right, that makes sense. Precedurally, we were all sitting here. We saw you walk in and we're like, Barbara!
Thank you.
So I have a, let's see if this, if my clarification is really clarification of what I thought I said. On the second page, where it says, page 78 and 79 under stairways. So at the end of that paragraph, it says that Simpson's rock stairway helps prevent erosion, blah, 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 blah. And I, what I believe I said, because this is what I think is true, is that my rock stairway prevents erosion by stabilizing the bank. It's, it just keeps the bank from falling, from falling in, not that people, because there were rocks there anyway, just they weren't safe rocks to walk on, because the, and it's only like three or four, it's only like three feet high, but anyway, so I just added some rocks to make the stepping down more stable, so I essentially...
So what would you like to say?
I'd like it to say to prevent erosion by stabilizing the bank, period, and leave off caused by people. Thank you. Does that make sense that that's what, I mean, does that jive with what people took away? I don't want to leave the wrong impression.
You set an option in the future to evaluate what's being done and make sure it is stable.
Yes. So then, I have the top of page four, I think it's, yeah, page four. Third paragraph begins Hotchkiss said, then the last, the last sentence said, "No reply is recorded." And I believe that there was further discussion that indicated that I shouldn't draft a statement. We decided we weren't going to make a statement from the planning board regarding the farmer's market, right? We talked about the farmer's market. None of us were particularly excited about it being at the, here at the town hall, but we decided not to do something as a board.
Yes.
So rather than "No reply is recorded," I would, I would recommend it says, "Further discussion indicated he should not." Is that fair?
Further discussion indicated what?
So it says Simpson asked whether he should draft a statement from the planning board. Further discussion indicated he should not.
Oh, okay.
Or that it might best be taken up as individual citizens or something. That doesn't leave you hanging.
No, that's a, no, I like that too. That would work.
We can say both. Say again, Tara, what do you have to say?
Further discussion indicated that this matter might best be taken up as individual citizens.
Great. That's perfect, because then that leads right into the next paragraph, which is Meowa asked to whom she should present her protest.
Where are you? What page?
Top of page four. Well, top, page four. Third paragraph that begins Hotchkiss said. It's the end of that paragraph and then leading into the next paragraph.
I don't have the exact of what you said, Tara. I've written, "Further discussion indicated that this matter should best be handled by individual citizens."
Handled as individual citizens.
As individuals.
Rather than as planning board members, the collective hive. I have something as well.
Okay, go ahead.
It says that in the first sentence of that same paragraph, "The planning board members are speaking as private citizens, not as members of the planning board."
Well, then, because then it says Simpson asked whether he should draft a statement, and then instead of saying "No reply is recorded," we just kind of almost circled back to that.
We're already taking that out, and Scott wanted a sentence, "Further discussion indicated he should not," and then do I add your sentence also?
If everyone agrees.
Yes?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I think it's, in this case, Moore's, Moore's is fine.
We have thoroughly discussed this matter.
We did. Well, that's, yeah.
No, I think it was a good discussion.
Laura, you had something?
Just really quick, the very, the page four at the very top, Meowa is a member of the Waldaborough Conservation Committee and the Waldaborough Business Association. I'm not a member of either of those.
Is anybody in this group a member of those things?
Karen Clark is, was that her name?
Karen Clark is not a member of the planning board, so I should delete that sentence. I apologize, Laura.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
I was like, wow, you're very active.
No.
Yeah, I read it and was impressed.
I'll be honest.
But were you told by somebody that permits for farmer's markets are issued by the CEO?
I thought maybe that was a discussion we had here, because I was asking where did they get that permission from, and then I think somebody had said the CEO. I didn't specifically get that information, but I thought as part of the discussion, that's what somebody had said. Because, or I thought it was maybe the selectmen that we said.
Yeah, we said the selectmen had agreed to it.
Yeah.
I think...
They had to agree to it because it's municipal property. They had to agree to it because it's used in municipal property.
Right, but they didn't also have to go through the planning board?
No, the CEO got that.
Hmm, well, I think that that probably referred to Karen Clark then, but I don't know who would have, would somebody on the board have known that she was told that the permits were issued by the code enforcement officer?
Well, she's, her name was related to the farmer's market at some point in here.
Correct. That's why I'm thinking that that maybe was referring to Karen Clark and not...
Why don't we just take it out?
I think we should just take it out.
Take what out? I've already stricken the sentence.
Thank you. She's perfect.
As a member of those two committees, but now it reads...
But then the sentence, "She was told," the sentence after that, "She was told that permits for," that sentence has to come out as well.
That sentence is also being stricken.
And the last sentence, "The select board also had to approve the mood," also has to come out.
Well, Laura was, or wouldn't it be Laura was told that farmer's market?
Yeah, but I just asked her and she said she knows nothing about that. She wasn't told any of those things.
I think it was just part of the discussion that we had.
Was I apparently not listening to that? I'm so sorry.
No, I think it was just part of the discussion that we had, because we had questions about it.
Correct.
Well, Karen must have been told that the planning board doesn't review farmer's markets.
Well, from what I know about Karen Clark, I believe that Karen Clark is a member of the Waldaborough Conservation Committee and the Waldaborough Business Association. So I think that this, that whole paragraph was about Karen Clark rather than about Laura.
Okay, but nonetheless, this board was told that the select, that the planning board does not have the right to review farmer's markets.
The impression I had was that it was assumed, but not necessarily true, because it's a change of venue, so...
What's a change of venue?
Having the farmer's market here. It's a change of venue at the...
For this property?
Yeah.
Good, but they have it here all the time. They do hot dogs, they do, you know...
But that's considered retail, and that's what we were looking at.
No, farmer's markets are different, just separate.
That wasn't, that wasn't brought up at the last one, at the last meeting. That's...
I recall saying all that at the meeting. I can show the chart right here.
Because that's what we were wondering. We didn't know.
Right, yeah.
I think we recognized that farmer's markets were different, and then, say, going forward, maybe looking at streamlining the land use ordinance again.
Right, because, yeah.
Recognizing that they are a retail.
Because a farmer's market is a big thing and it's a, you know, can be a lot of traffic and where it goes is kind of important.
And they're selling alcohol on a property that it's illegal to do that.
Hmm.
Not open bottles.
It can be sold, it can't be consumed.
Yeah, that's not, okay, that's not the information I had, but...
All the, all farmer's markets have that pretty much now. You can sell closed bottles, but...
So looking at the top of page four, am I deleting the last three sentences? Everything after customers is deleted?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the best way to... Okay.
I have one.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry. I have another one. I'm doing worse than anybody.
At the top of page three, second sentence, it said, "P-Lot asked whether there should be a farmland exemption as an overlay on this section and how I would like it to end after this section is, in order to determine how many shoreland zone, shoreland zone homeowners may, might be affected," or something to that effect. Because I was just interested in data.
Okay.
Same reason both everyone.
Yes.
Thank you. Everyone being scolded.
Let me be sure I've got that, Tara. After section, it says, "In order to determine how many shoreland zone landowners might be affected."
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We all set with that one? I have another one for page four. Middle of the page in the paragraph, beginning on another issue.
Yes.
The middle sentence, "Simpson agreed that the sign is oversized and does not meet ordinance requirements." I don't know that for sure.
May not.
So I would say, maybe, yeah, may not.
Instead of does, may.
Or maybe overs, may not.
Seems oversized and may not.
Yeah.
The town, municipal properties don't have to follow the town ordinances, right?
Well, my main point is that it wasn't attractive. It wasn't a very attractive sign, but I would say, so, "Agreed that the sign may not meet ordinance requirements."
You don't want oversized there?
Well, it doesn't, doesn't, regardless of, there's many ways which it might not meet the ordinance, but the size would not be needed.
So you'd like me to strike oversized, that the sign may not meet ordinance requirements?
Strike is oversized and does.
Got it.
And say that the sign may not meet ordinance requirements.
Got it. Thank you.
That would, that would make me happier. I don't want to...
I'm delighted that you all are reading the minutes.
You put a lot of work into these things.
So, yeah, and we, we go on and on and say a lot of things, so it's amazing that you can capture as much as you can capture. The last part, the very end of the whole minutes, big question, will townspeople be voting on the L U O revisions this November? Or will there be, the very end of the whole minutes?
Page five?
Right.
Oh, big question. I got you. All right, now what?
I am, I'm confused about this because I thought that we were submitting these shoreland, uh, shoreland zoning changes that we were going to approve to go for the town to vote on, correct?
And that's actually the next item.
Yeah, and then there's actually also an overall ordinance revision committee that's being put together to look at the overall land use ordinance. So I didn't come away from that meeting having a big question about, so I'm not sure what this is. Did we have a big question at the end of the last meeting about?
I don't remember there being a question.
I'm agreeable to deleting that whole paragraph if you don't like it.
Well, I, I like it in a lot of abstract ways, but.
If it's not, if it doesn't, it shouldn't be there, let's delete it.
Yeah, okay, because we did have a discussion about what was coming next, but I think, I think we all, I think we have an understanding of what that is. Okay, so with that many changes, should we vote on these minutes with those changes? Or do we want to have Susan redo them and we can vote on them the next time? Or?
I wasn't here, so I'm standing in the way.
So what is, how does everybody feel about it?
We vote on the minutes regularly. I move we vote on minutes now and if we run into any difficulties, we could bring it up later.
Okay, so can I have a motion to?
So we're voting on them with the?
With the changes that we just discussed. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I move we approve the minutes as revised.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
When something like that happens, then do we get emailed the updated minutes? I mean.
I'll, I'll email them before, and then if anyone has any comments within 24 or 48 hours, then you can. And then if I hear from no one, I send them over.
No, but I mean, is that ordinary practice to email updated minutes?
We hardly ever update the minutes.
No, I didn't mean update. I'm sorry.
Correct. And then whatever the word is.
You're going to be sorry if people start reading these.
But we've revised them before and they, and they go into the town records. They usually don't, as in the revised version, but we don't, if it's a small thing, it doesn't usually go back out.
We've made so many changes tonight. Maybe you'd like to see the minutes to see whether you're now happy with those.
I think it's a good idea.
Man, I don't want to make more work.
Well, because what I do, I have, I keep a file of all the approved minutes, myself of mine. But in the case where there's a small change, I note the change on it and I put a check mark that it's approved and I put it in my file. So I don't ask for another copy because I've captured the small changes. This is a large one I would, and we made some other changes. I would rather have, I would rather have a fresh, freshly revised, revised copy emailed at the same time as it goes into the record. So.
I move to postpone the acceptance.
Well, we can still approve it though.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's fair to approve the motion. It's just, I would like an updated copy so I know what we actually have approved.
Thank you.
Are we fair with that?
The updated copy, the approved copies are put online.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so anyone.
Because I can always print them out, but it's, it's, it's nice to have them, you know, it's.
Would you like them emailed to you?
It's FedEx versus going to the post office box to, yeah. Great. If you can, so if you can email it to us, or you can email it to me, Susan, I can email it to everybody.
Okay.
And you send it to Max, the revised version.
Email to Scott and Max and you're going to distribute.
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay. Great. So the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
I abstain.
Yes, she's not there. Okay. So, yes, please.
Could I ask Max and Bill a question? This is maybe a rhetorical question and I don't mean it to be a big deal discussion, but I'm just sort of curious about what's the background on the municipal properties being exempt from planning board review or approval? I mean, how did that sort of thing happen?
The farmer's market?
No, just in general. I, I don't mean the farmer's market in particular, but just in general, like we're talking about the sign and the farmer's market, but the planning.
The municipality isn't exempt from the ordinance. The activities on the municipal property are still guided by the use chart.
Okay.
So if, if the town, you know, just for sake of an argument, wanted to put a multifamily project on a property, that would have to follow whatever review is required in the use chart, so.
But, but like a sign didn't have to come to us for any kind of?
No, signs never do.
Signs always go to the code officer, same with the farmer's market.
Right, but if, let's assume, let's, let's assume for the moment, for, as a thought experiment, that that town sign does indeed violate the sign ordinance, but it got approved.
Then we take it up with the code officer.
Okay, so it's a code officer.
It's bigger than 32 square feet?
It's a four by eight.
So what would be a better example if they actually do like the clam shack on the pier that they're talking about doing to really market the clam brand? Because that's municipal property, correct?
It would be a restaurant, so then that would be.
Restaurant on the pier, so then that would be something that we'd actually have to review.
The only exceptions maybe is we may, we may permit like peddlers, so that, that's covered by a separate ordinance. Like truck vendors, food vendors, that would not come to the planning board. That would just be, the, the select board would do that. Because they would be typically on the, the road, or even if they're on public property, they're subject to a separate.
Ted?
If there's a substantial addition to this building, for instance, like out back, the planning board would be reviewing that, obviously.
Yeah, if they expanded the municipal, well, what we would do is we'd look at the use chart.
Yeah.
Municipal buildings, whatever review is required.
That's one of the most important situations I can see.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good example. If we built a new fire station or public works garage, that would all be subject to.
Why? Why wouldn't that just be a CEO thing since it's already a fire station here and?
Well, if it's an expansion and the use chart requires, like we do the planning board, it would come to this board. If the use chart said CEO, then the CEO would do it.
Yeah, public buildings and uses other than municipal, all are planning board stuff. Retail, mostly plan. Like I, I use restaurant, for example, that would be planning board as long as it's not a historic village. Yeah, historic village. At the farmer's market, that's CEO.
Thank you.
Okay, well, so let me go, so maybe the sign, uh, let's go back to the sign for a minute because it's, it is electronic. I think there's part of the sign ordinance that says you don't have flashing light electronic.
Right, that is the one part.
Right? So I think that was maybe the, maybe the issue as opposed to the, so the, the. So I guess the concern is more of an abstract one that, because, okay, farmer's markets are a separate thing. They're different.
No, you have to go to the use chart. That's the critical thing. That's not separate. They're how they're defined.
How they're defined, yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's fair. I think maybe just the issue is it's, we, we, there's some mechanism for which, because if, if it just goes to the select board and the select board approves something, that doesn't override. In other words, there's still a legal responsibility for approvals through the planning board for use.
For instance, you, you approve a restaurant, but then the, the select board has to approve a vellucia license and a liquor license.
Yeah.
If that's applicable. So, or we may have to approve separately a road opening for something like that.
Right.
So that, so a lot of times, so those approvals dovetail. It's not either or necessarily.
Right.
Well, and then the next example would be, take AD Gray, for example, and what happens with that? If someone was to turn that into a housing development, the planning board would obviously need, need to approve that.
Yeah.
To turn it into the next brown block or whatever.
Right, okay.
But the town select board, or the town in general, I think, has to vote to approve giving that land to whoever wants to buy it.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, there's that, yeah, because they're settling municipal property. And then the use is what they actually do with it. You would treat it like any other development.
Okay.
And in terms of the farmer's market, which is, I guess leasing or borrowing the land for the day.
But then that requires.
The select.
The select board.
Say, you're fine doing that.
Yeah, if someone used the church parking lot for the farmer's market, it'd be the same thing. They just get a permit. And then they would have to work out the lease agreement with the property owner.
Well, that's an interesting one. Because just getting a permit, that's because farmer's markets can, it's a big, it's a big use. It's periodic, but it's a, it's a significant use. So it's interesting that it's separated out.
It is because then it says municipal buildings and uses, planning board. So that, that's really confusing. So yes, the farmer's market can be approved by the CEO, but the municipal buildings and uses, planning board.
Well, public buildings and municipal uses are meant for things that the town runs, the farmer's markets, its own independent thing.
Oh, okay.
So again, if we wanted to make an emergency, an extension for emergency services, that's a public use, so that would be planning board.
Okay.
One of the things that we have to do when we look at the ordinances again is to look at our performance standards. Because like what's germane to your question is high-traffic users, uses. So the question we need to raise is regardless of the type of activity, what if an activity that, you know, appears at first sight rather inane, but creates a lot of traffic, just as an example, or creates a lot of stormwater? Maybe that needs a different type of review, so we need to add some scalability.
Some kind of trigger, yeah.
That would say, all right, you know, this is when it, you know, relates or it, we have a performance standard that requires additional things to deal with that on that. For, a, a good example is a Dunkin' Donuts. Everybody thinks they're pretty, you know, just typical kind of usage, but they're extremely high-traffic.
No kidding.
You know, so, you know, you might see it's small square footage, but a lot of traffic, so you look at those, you know, and our ordinance needs to reflect that.
Yep.
Kind of activity. Where something else might be a lot of, like the storage buildings, a lot of square footage, but extremely.
Low traffic, right.
So there's the two donuts, just as in.
Well, that's a good, that's something to capture for the, for the review, the overall review after the comp plan.
Yep.
Great, okay. Well, thanks. I think that was a useful discussion. It's just, any, any of those kinds of things that the town and the select board wants to do puts a lot of pressure on the code enforcement officer.
That's not going to change.
No, not likely.
Nature of the beast.
Yes, but that's where we could help as a board if it's, if there's a appropriate way to do that. Okay.
I feel like that was a great segue to whatever Max is dying to tell us about what's going on.
Yeah, what are you dying to tell us, Max? Is it about shoreland zoning or you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, and shoreland zoning is one of the big questions that we had in the minutes was, are we voting on the land use ordinance or forming a committee? But forming a committee for everything that's not seven and 10?
Yeah.
But as for shoreland zoning, you all should have the copy that will be used for the public forum.
Yep.
Any changes we've made, anything taken out from the original, it's stricken, you're allowed through it. Anything that's added, has an underline to it?
You can, at the public hearing, you can make changes at the public hearing.
Yes.
When's the public hearing?
The 22nd.
22nd.
Oh, August.
August, yeah. We need to have that day so we can have all the notices sent out in time and so we can.
We can make changes at the public hearing day, so we get to get the language that day publicly.
Correct.
Because we're recording, we would record it, you know, so it can be done that day.
So if there's one other item that maybe we've overlooked this entire time, I know we spent only a year. It's not like we missed something.
So this is the big thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
This is it, yeah.
Look at it between now and then and.
And then we'll have a bit of time.
So if we want to make a suggestion, we bring it up as individuals at that meeting?
Well, you, the board can bring it up.
Yeah, you can still bring it up and just say, oh, this is something that I think we forgot to mention or.
Yeah.
Okay.
It can be discussed then. And then once it, no, you go.
That's the only item on the agenda.
For the, for the special meeting on the 22nd.
Do we think anyone's going to come? We'll be there.
People live along the, on the curve.
What time will it be? Seven?
Six.
Six, okay. Well, I will say, it depends on what it. I think it depends on what people interpret is going to be changed about the shoreland zoning in that I've had a lot of people want, you know, I've had somebody ask me, you know, should I come to your planning board meeting because I see you're going to talk about the shoreland zoning? And I said, please come. Well, and they said, what are you doing to the shoreland zoning? And I said, well, primarily, we're trying to make sure it conforms with changes in the state law. And they said, oh, okay, see you later. So that said, I hope we get a lot of people there.
Typically we don't.
But, but that's just, that's just a little sidebar. Okay.
So then, once we have the public meeting on the 22nd, any changes in notes that are made, I'll then do, and that has to be it.
Okay, yes.
Because then it'll be submitted to the select board meeting the next Tuesday.
Yep, right.
They approve it.
Yep.
If they have any last-minute changes.
Yep.
If they do, we'll quickly make a change, but we'll still be able to quickly make that change.
Okay.
And then if everything goes right, it should, we should make the deadlines and then this will be on the November vote.
Okay.
Good. Just for background, the reason why it's important to do these public hearings is we can't change it at the ballot or even if we had a town meeting, open town meeting, you can't change an ordinance at an open town meeting. So every, every, the public input to affect a change.
Yes.
Has to be held before that.
Yep.
So, wait, so the select board, if they want to make a change, any members of the select board, they come to the meeting on this 22nd or they just give it to Max? So we get a chance to see it? I mean, is it likely they're going to make any changes?
It would be nicest they came on the 22nd if they had any changes.
But I think.
But they can't do it beforehand so that we don't have a?
No, no, it has to be done in the open. I mean, the, the shoreland zoning is, is, you know, we have to be careful on what we change.
Yeah, that was my question.
The other thing to keep in mind is that the changes after the vote, presuming it gets voted by the townspeople, it's not effective yet until we have to submit it to the commissioner of D E P. They review it and then after they review it and accept it, then it's officially accepted.
Okay.
Until that time, the existing ordinance is in effect. And they usually take 30 to 60 days, up to 90 days to review.
So when this, so we have our meeting and we can make some changes at that meeting if we wish. So if we get ti, input from a citizen, the planning board would then vote on including that change or not.
You would have to consider that.
And we would have to consider it.
Or you could consider, yeah.
Right, and then we, we, let's say we'd vote on including it or not including, and then it goes to the select board. Let's say the select board wanted to make a change.
They could make a change.
They could make a change without us having input or being able to approve or disapprove their change. They could just change it.
Yeah, because your, your, your role is not, you know, is just advisory. You're, you're acting as.
Right, we're at the, we serve at the behest of the select board. Yeah, so that's fine. I understand. I'm just clarifying. So, go ahead.
You should come to that select board meeting.
Which is the date of that one?
Yes.
The 20th, 22nd, so our public hearing, so 28th?
Okay. 22nd is what, is a Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Is that a Tuesday?
Yes.
28th, yes.
At six or seven? Six?
Six.
Six.
Unless they decide to have an executive meeting, but.
What's the date?
28th.
28th.
But I'll make sure to, I have to make sure Julie puts that on the select board meeting and then I'll send out that notice to everyone.
So. This, what is your vision? Do you have, do you have a vision for how to present this at that, at the meeting on the 22nd? There's a lot here to digest. I'm assuming we're going to have hard copies for people at that meeting?
It'll be similar to how we did the comp plan where I'm going to be making some hard. I need, one thing I need to know right now is that there will be a quorum on the 22nd. So I have two, three, four.
No recusal, I'm in.
You're not hard, so that's fine. You're not hard, so that's fine.
Yeah, I think so.
So, yeah, I need to make sure of that, so, I'll be making.
Okay.
So I'll be making hard copies, and then, some will be available here at the town office.
Okay, top of the set.
Be downloaded from the website.
Okay.
I'll see if the library is fine, having some copies with them.
Okay.
But this is going to be online as well?
It's already online.
Okay.
And I, it's everywhere anywhere else.
So.
And it'll be advertised.
What I would recommend is, give people like a five-minute synopsis, you'll need to go, and, and just where we've made the major changes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine doing that, and I'm assuming that, that as chairman of the planning board, it would.
Yeah.
Be appropriate for me to be the person to, to take a review and go through the primary changes, okay.
You have pulled the short straw.
You don't have to go through all, just the significant.
Huh?
You have pulled the short straw.
I have, okay.
It might be worthwhile explaining to people that the underlying, people typically know that you're not.
Yeah, I got like a 30, I visualize a 30 to 80 PowerPoint slides with.
And then, we'll be due until a little.
Yeah, that's right, exactly, and here's Scott at the side of the shoreline zoning.
Oh, sorry.
And then another important thing is, if someone can't come to me but has notes.
Yeah.
Then, says, send it, send it to me, and I'll have a master copy, I'll make sure to print them off for everyone here, like I always do, and then.
We should have copies too, get them in advance for the public.
Of notes?
Of comments.
Oh, com.
Similar to, similar to the butters that I always read off.
Yeah.
If someone.
Oh, if someone sends something in, gotcha.
Can't make it and says, hey, Scott, I can't make it, what do I do?
Sure, sure, okay.
Say, give me something, or send it to the town planner.
And how do people know that they can make comments and submit them?
That's what the advertisement states, it's already.
So, I just have a weird question, you guys don't have a problem with the fact that if you have a small building within 25 feet of the shore, you could expand it to 800 square feet, which is a 20 by 40 building, within 25 feet of the shore, or by adding 30%, say it was already 799 square feet, they could add 30% more to the building within 25 feet.
We don't have a 30% rule anymore. We just have set, 30% has been replaced with a different.
That's not what it's, that's not what it says in, in 10.
Yeah, it should be, that's.
Particle 10.
I mean, that's could be.
No, no, it's there, it's still, all still there.
What page is talking about the shoreline?
Non-conforming uses.
What pages are those about?
Well, if you go to 10-8, the summary table, and it's matched up by, if you just, just as an example, look at 10-8.
Yep.
Part C.
800 square feet or 30% larger, whichever.
Right, but it's not just the table, the table just reflects what's in the text, if you go to paragraph C, the middle sentence, to a size greater than 1,500 square feet or 30% larger than the footprint that existed at the time of the resource protection district was established.
I'm sorry, that's, that's correct, yeah.
So all these.
We replaced, the one we replaced, just add the 30%, it was a different.
Okay.
Big volume and, I'm sorry, I'm, that's my mistake.
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm com, I, 30, 30% larger.
So up to 1,500 square feet is the biggest you can get?
Well, that's, that's at less than 100 feet, less than 25 feet.
Oh, but at 8, it's a principal structure entirely located less than 25 feet from the normal high water line of a water body, blah, 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 maximum footprint 800 square feet, or 30% larger than the footprint. So if someone's got a little boathouse, they can be making that quite big, within 25 feet of the shore.
What it means is it can be no more than 800 square feet larger.
Or 30% more, depending, whatever's greater, it says whatever's greater.
Right. Yep.
So it could be.
Could be more, yeah.
It could be more.
Mm-hmm.
And that could, that's kind of a long building, I mean, it could be 18 by 50 feet, 18 by 60 feet, it's, you know.
240, yeah, 800, 240.
Right.
Square feet.
Could be a two-bedroom home within 25 feet, I mean, is that something we want to encourage?
Well, I think what we had talked, if I remembered correctly, the discussion was that when people had bought these, you know, a lot of these are grandfathered in, and people had paid good money for them, are still paying good money for them, and, and while I would certainly encourage people, if they have properties or feel strongly, they should absolutely be writing in their comments, and we should be probably taking that as a whole, but I don't know that we decided to change it, because I think, as a board, we kind of looked at it even-handed, like, yes, maybe we don't like it, but these people may want to do something with that property.
But that property is probably not a lot that's 25 feet deep, it's probably a bigger lot, because they have to get to it, so, I mean, I doubt there's very few properties that are 20 feet, 25 feet deep with a right-of-way across.
Yeah, you're still subject to, you can't, you can't encroach upon the water, and you have to meet the setback requirements, or get a variance, but they do allow you to expand.
You can't, you can't have a setback with, if you're within 25 feet, I mean, you already canceled that out, there's no setback, to speak of, if you have a principal structure within 25 feet.
Setback from the side, or rear, they give you an allowance to go, can't go forward, but you can go, let's say, this is the building, here's the water, you can't go this way, but they do allow you to go this way, as long as you don't go more back. But those, the extensions here are still subject to side setbacks and things like that, so, you do have some, yeah.
If they already meet the side setbacks, the only way to go is back to the road.
Back, right.
Yeah, and I mean, this is.
No, I understand you can't go forward.
You can go up.
Yeah, and I think, I think if any of the comments that we've gotten are, you know, I have this property and I can't, I can't, that has been, been in my family for X number of years, and I can't do anything to.
Expand it.
To expand it or make it a more, a useful property.
We, years ago, 20 years ago, a number was put together a proposal to revamp this entirely, and just, I'll just quickly tell you what we, we recommended, that allowing expansions as a quid pro quo to doing certain things to protect water quality, so, we would allow an expansion if you're closer to the water, subject to creating additional buffers or things like that, and then allow the expansion, you know, on that. So you would have to do something to mitigate the impact of having a structure and higher impervious areas and, you know, water, you know, going into the water body before you go to expand, so.
But this doesn't say any of that kind of stuff?
No, no, that, that would be something we would have to do on our own, on that there.
So we could submit those comments too, to the 22?
That could be something we can talk about after, because that would take considerable amount.
That would take another year to.
Yeah.
Come in front of the town again.
Submit a couple of drafts to DEP, they would probably okay it, as long as, because what we would be doing.
Because we can be stricter than the state.
Yeah, and it would be, well, it would be stricter in one way, but allow maybe greater expansion, but the expansion would be based on how much you do to do or mitigate the impact of a non-conforming structure on water quality.
And that would work out well with your climate adaptations, because otherwise, we think all those homes in the 25-foot are going out to the water anyway.
Well, the biggest thing, you know, again, we talked about this once before, is preservation of canopy and dufflight, that provides a way for the nutrients to be taken up before they get to the water, phosphorus or nitrogen, and slowing down stormwater.
So people that have boathouses and want to change it to a living.
They can't do that, even in the existing.
Change of, change of uses, no.
Boathouses are supposed to, once they go, they go, you know, you can't, you know, we don't see too many of them.
Yes.
There's not too many around, most of them decayed away.
There's just so few people out on boats anymore, it's amazing, it's crazy, this great place with no boaters.
So, the, and the, the many, many discussions we had about manure and stairways, it turns out that those are state, sort of state wordings, and they're sort of.
Both, well, the manure, we should talk about that when we do the ordinance review, in terms of overall water quality, not just around the shoreline, it should be much of broader context, yeah.
So we don't have a, I remember this coming up, back when Abden was on this planning board, and the manure thing, you know, I thought there was actually a definition in the back about manure storage, there isn't, is this, and are definitions that come with these new, Article 7 and 10, they'll be added, this has nothing to do with the public, but it's something that we take care of after.
Well, we should have a copy of the definition, any definitions that.
Yeah, there was an issue with the printer after all these ones, I couldn't get the.
Yeah, because I think we should have the.
Definitions one time at a time.
I think.
Yeah, we, we did add definitions, but definitions are also on the town website as well.
What is it in the back?
But we should have, we should make sure to have those available.
Okay, so the manure storage, though, issue is, when we're talking about agriculture, the language in here is more about, we're talking about manure facilities, they're talking about the concrete slabs enclosed, and that's 50 livestock or greater. So right now, our shoreline zoning to town has nothing that deals with livestock 1 through 49, and 49 livestock is, that's quite a lot, 2, mismanaged is a lot, so.
We do have some fairly heavy-duty runoff standards.
Exactly, so it's, to my mind, it's a huge hole in our shoreline zoning.
But are you saying that, so, where's, I gotta refine.
Other than the 100-foot setback?
The manure storage here, that calls for 100-foot setback.
You're saying it's only applicable to farms that have more than 50?
That's what, that's my question that I had, wanted Max to ask Bill a while ago, is what are we talking about with this?
Yeah, in shore, I mean, we're only, in shoreline zoning, we're only talking about water bodies within, the defined water bodies within 250 feet of those water bodies, so it doesn't include all streams, doesn't include all wetlands, it includes all the ponds that we have, and tidal waters, but, but it doesn't include our other water bodies.
I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, it is, streams are narrowly defined in shoreline zoning, and wetlands don't include forested wetlands, emergent, some emergent wetlands, and it's typically only wetlands over town, or if a wetland's associated with an existing water body, so a wetland near the shore, or a pond, or a wetland adjacent to a tidal area, tidal marshes included.
But ecological contamination is covered purely in all directions.
Yeah.
As far as where it's located.
Yeah, as long as you, if you have a flow of water or a stream.
Anyway.
That eventually is going into, you know, it's in the watershed of something, and eventually, that impacts, at least for us, if it impacts the midomic, and, you know, that's a negative impact, so.
Thank you.
So, 100 feet horizontal distance of a great pond, or a river flowing to a great pond, or within 100 feet horizontal distance of other water bodies, tributary streams or wetlands?
Yeah.
So no manure storage?
Yeah, but that's, those are the, we have to look at the definitions of what tributary streams are, et cetera, in shoreline zoning specifically, so it's only cer, it's only certain streams, at the outlet of a great pond, or the confluence of two streams, at that confluence, then it, if it's not an outlet, then, then we count it in shoreline.
And manure storage areas, blah, 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 such that the facility produces no discharge or effluent, so, this, this description is really talking about the 50, you know, one of these buildings.
So it's a manure storage facility, not just.
Right.
So, that's, that's an important distinction.
We've got a law in town about one dog walking along the river edge, so, you know.
And you can have 49 livestock.
Running, 101 feet.
Wow, that's a lot of manure.
It is.
But it does, it, this answers the question, I didn't, I never captured before that this was regarding a facility, because when we were first talking about it, and when Marshall was here, we were worried about.
Couple of animals.
Two horses, you know, so, that's not, that's not an issue, but, that is something to be worth, to, for some clarification at some point.
Yeah, but we really don't address even the proximity of animals.
So can we, since it says, this is agriculture, be manure storage, can we expand this paragraph so it includes not only facilities, but general manure storage, because manure storage, if you start accumulating a pile of manure, why would we ask?
The answer is yes, we can, but we're not going to be able to do it before the 22nd on that, we have to get it approved by the Department of Ag first, before we do it, it's going to take a while to do.
Well, again, I, I also too, I, if, if it is just a few, in, in somebody like Marshall's case, where you just have a couple of animals, I don't think it's a, that's, I had a trouble with this, because I thought this was actually too restrictive, not, not restrictive enough, because if it's applying, if it applies to a manure facility, which is now my reading of it, I think that that's perfectly appropriate, you do have to have some restrictions on, you know, that, that level of a facility, of something that's storing that amount of material, for something that's just, I realize that there's a regulation on a dog and that, you know, small numbers of animals.
There's a whole DEP study that have talked about duck poop and other deer poop and, you know, E. coli and bacteria in the rivers, and there are.
That's why watershed-wide, it's an issue, because we can have animals, you know, using a stream as drinking water, and if they frequent that, their effluent is going to.
Right.
Into the stream, and that will impact the quality of our water, that's, that's the problem we have now.
You're saying deer are a problem? They're so cute.
Department of Agriculture, there's nothing to do with people that have, you know, a dozen horses, or, you know, raising pigs all the time, I mean, you know, small batches of, you know, they, they're not really.
Yeah, you're supposed to, if you have animals, you're supposed to follow best management practices, and their, their Department of Ag is supposed to regulate whether or not they are, and make suggestions, whether they do or not is that's, but that's their bailiwick on that. I think we do need to look at that, and that's something we have to do, because we're not, you know, because again, it dovetails right into water quality, for us, in particular.
So I have two questions, Max, would it be possible for you to send us a link to the Department of Ag descriptions or requirements and that stuff, so that we could just read it?
You can go right to the, their, their website.
They're only going to deal with 50 animals or more, they're not going to really be talking about all the little stuff.
They are dealing.
I thought.
Absolutely with the quantity and of bacterial contamination, that's, that to me is the bottom line, in my opinion, in all directions, we have some fairly serious laws preventing the bacterial contamination, and that doesn't really hinge on the numbers at all, we've closed public beaches here in Maine, with a few kids sitting there in diapers on the beach, and situations like that are covered by the law, no question.
I mean, the town is, on one hand, is spending money with the DEP studying the river for animal effluent coming into the river, and how to think about that, or manage it, or whatever, and at the same time, we're, we're doing this, and, you know, it's, this, this agriculture section does not move the town forward in terms of, you know, making the situation better in the next 10 years for, because there's a lot of hobby farming going on, so a lot of pigs being born.
Yeah.
There's a lot of sheep, there's a lot of, lot of stuff going on in the watershed, that's, and, and the CEO is not looking at this.
And it's a lot.
He wouldn't be walking around, you know, taking, paying attention to that. He wouldn't be walking around, you know, taking, paying attention to that. And I, there's like, there's people interested in doing that that really don't know what they're doing yet also. But Bill, are you saying that this issue is not for the shoreline zoning August 22nd meeting? This issue is for the longer-term land use ordinance stuff?
Absolutely, yeah. Because we, if we're going to impose something, it has to be wider than just that 250 feet within shoreline.
Yeah.
Because the issues occur inland also.
Yeah.
On that. And in fact, most of the farming would be inland, you know, for the most part on that. But, you know, if they're near a stream, or a pond, or just in the watershed and the stormwater flow.
Yeah.
Gets, you know, goes unabated, or is not taken up, you know, infiltrated, or whatever. That's a problem.
So, changing the land, the ordinances for this next phase based on the comprehensive plan, blah, 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 that's probably a three-year process?
No, should we, hopefully within a year.
You think?
Well, I would, let, let me just express a little frustration over this particular issue of the manure. Because we've been working on this for a year. And we've been talking about manure for nine months, at least nine months of that. And we have no more information today about trying to, trying, because I think the question was, well, how fresh is this manure? How big is the pile? That if we're going to make restrictions other than this, we need to know what we're doing. And we know no more information. So, I don't, I, I would hate to hold this up. Because we've been waiting on ourselves for nine months to find out more information about it. Doesn't make any sense to me.
So, if we.
That's how I feel about it.
If we wanted to educate.
But somebody can come from the public, the 22nd, and make a suggestion on that night.
Absolutely, they can. And we can, we'll talk about it, and we can vote, and we can decide how we're going to do it.
We'll have the same discussion then. Someone, I think Sarah had it, I think she, were you going to say something?
Well, I, I'm, I'm kind of fascinated by this whole issue. And I'd like, so if I want to learn more, I go to the Department of Ag and.
Department of Ag, you'd also probably want to go to the Solon Water Conservation District.
Okay.
They probably have more user-friendly information.
Definitely.
They do a lot of the outreach, working with farmers to design.
Oh, okay, I know.
Systems on that.
I know who to contact there.
They're kind of like the backup YAG. It's kind of more, more enforcement and, you know.
Well, in the meantime, too, can you ask, if you have somebody you know to contact, can you ask them where we can get some, this, because if, unless the state has some advice on this issue, because I think Barbara's point is really good. For less, less than 50 livestock can still cause a lot of damage. And we have a lot of grandfathered farming that goes right to the rivers. That's a problem. We've got a lot of issues, but this.
One kid in diapers can be a problem.
Right, so this, just, so this, but this, so this issue in terms of, of what we should be, if we're going to be dealing with the whole land use ordinance, shoreline and otherwise, as part of the comprehensive plan, we could really use some kind of guidance from the state. And if they don't have any, they should, we should ask them to have somebody work on it. That's, that's their job, right? I mean, well, I'm just.
But it sounds like somebody, it sounds like the information is there.
It's not there.
Well, you know, Barbara's tried. I think that's the problem.
I think we have to develop some intelligent, you know, ways to go for it. And the state might be tailing Apple, obviously.
Yeah, Ted, Ted, yeah, hold on.
The current town manager has been down doing water sampling herself. And the shellfish committee's been doing sampling. I did sampling myself. And if we have any questions at all, we just need to have samples taken and prove what's going on. We don't have to go any further. We can deal with it easily when we have solid proof as to how it's working. In fact, it's working out so well that we're lifting the restrictions on digging clams in Walterboro tighter to what we, the test results, rather than waiting for the state to come test it themselves sometime. The game is definitely in a good state of flux. And if you've got any real questions, we can get samples taken and prove to the moment what's, what is going on.
Sure, but I, and I agree with what you're saying, and it's a really good thing. I think the concern that I would have as, as a board is, we have something in the, there's something now in the zoning that the board is then approving that would allow someone a new, a new activity that's then going to cause a problem when you get to that testing. Because the ordinance is not well-defined, or we don't really understand how it might apply. You know, we just want to make sure we're not approving something that's not good for that, for that testing.
I think Sarah's point about people, a lot of people doing it. We need to provide some, you know, real good information. This is the way it needs to be done. Because otherwise, it's just going to create a problem.
Even a booklet, it's just like when you're opening a business in Walterboro, there's still no booklet out of the town office about how you, is there, Max? How to?
I've been trying to get that stuff in the EDC for a while.
Yeah, no kidding. So, it should be a basic, you know, even, you get to go get a sign permit, blah, blah, blah. But even if you want to open a farm.
Start a peer-to-peer collaborative. You want to, you open, open up, you want to have a farm in Walterboro? Here's a booklet. Here's some things. And please, take care of our water while you're, while you're planning out your farm.
Right.
Our waterways.
Some towns recommend a plan or contact conservation to do it. They'll do it for you. But I mean, they're limited with their budgets and things like that.
The Conservation Commission's only going to do what's based in our land use, in our ordinance, right? They're not going to do anything stricter.
What I'm saying is that you're a good resource to use.
Yeah.
But you could hire someone to do that also on that. But we would have to provide, kind of like with a performance standard, what you need to do, what action you need to take, whether, how to mitigate, or how to plan for it and implement it yourself. That's something we would have to put in the ordinance.
Well, there may be too, there's, there's, the University of Maine, the Extension Service, they have a lot of value. They have a, there's a world-famous composting expert. He might have some.
Yeah, this is from Mark Hutchinson.
Is that what you got?
Yeah, this is like, farm combines and feeds 40 or more animals than they need, or utilizes more than 100 tons of manure, or blah, blah, blah. I mean, this is all big agriculture stuff.
So, it's only the. Oh, that's what it takes to trigger a nutrient management plan. Wow, 100 tons of manure per year.
That's a lot of air.
That is, yeah. You could run into trouble with a lot less than that.
I could, I could do some research there, too.
Okay, sure. That would help.
Town manager just completed one of these courses with precise standards and can explain it down to one dog, or one home that has a malfunctioning sewage system. This is well under control. And the details just need to be defined as, on the, for the individual circumstance.
But we don't want it to get to the point where it's testing in the river. We want us, you know, hopefully, someone knew coming down and starting a farm that it's, you know, doesn't create the problem, then work backwards from it.
Yeah.
Are the solutions for this or not?
Julie went for the.
Uh, shh, no, I don't. But she's going to tell you in a minute, including some details as to how precise it is now.
How precise what is?
The testing.
So, is the definitions, is manure zoning going to be in the shoreline's definitions? Or is it just something we're going to add later to the overall ordinance definitions? And then how do we?
I'll pull up, I'll get the definitions sent out to everyone, what we have. And if it's not in there, then it's certainly.
Yeah, I can't remember. I don't think it is, to be honest.
There's a lot of definitions out there.
Yeah.
I don't remember seeing that in the shoreline. No, I don't remember it either.
You don't?
So, Bill, is it, I don't know what's, what, I will review this to come up with some kind of introduction for that meeting on the 22nd. Is it appropriate or not appropriate if, to come up with some written, a written summary to hand out with bullet points or something? It depends. I'm, I'm not sure what I'm going to come up with. But does, would that be okay? Or do you think that's a bad idea?
Oh, yeah, okay. I, I think, I would make it as brief as possible, just to give, because it's really the people's time to comment.
Yeah.
It's so much more readable. I mean, that alone is.
Yeah, except with the, you know, with the crossed-out sections, it takes a while to, it takes a while.
There'll be a cleaned-up version. Don't, don't worry about that.
Yeah.
I'm not clear as to whether the public hearing is only on Article seven and 10, or the whole land use ordinance.
No, just the shoreline zoning.
Just seven, not Article 10.
Article seven, 10, and the definitions relating to those two articles. That's it.
Good.
So, seven and 10.
And definitions.
And associated definitions.
Which is Article 16 for mysterious reasons.
Only, only the definitions that were changed.
Yeah.
Not the whole article.
Yeah. If someone comes in and says they want to change the.
Home occupation.
Yeah, the home occupation requirement to site plan review process. We kind of had to tell them to go home.
It's not Article 16. It's just definitions associated with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Associated with Article seven and 10?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, these, making the assumption that these, that Max has passed out, conform as he has told us to, the last version that we reviewed and, and accepted all the changes for at the last time we discussed this. Unless someone wants to go through all of these again.
No.
To confirm that.
We do have 15 minutes.
That Max captured this, I would entertain a motion that we approve these versions for discussion with the public on the 22nd.
So moved.
Is there a second? So, motion made and seconded. So, it does give us some follow-up on manure that I think we should do relative to the overall review. And.
I think it should at least be clear that we're asking that manure piles be 100, at least 100 feet away from stuff, not just manure facilities. Can it say that? I mean, even Marcia agreed that first could be 100 feet. But she didn't want it to be 125 feet, right? Can it at least say that?
I think my only point was it was harder in certain areas. Like, down where I live, you have everybody that got sold off as a splinter. So, if we're 200 feet across and you're asking us to put a manure pile basically dead center in the property. So, it does, depending on, unless you're all the way back, or depending on how small your property is, it can get a little weird.
My property is only 150 feet wide.
Oh, wow, you're so.
So, you could still, can get 100 feet away from the ocean. So, what do you mean?
I'm not worried about the ocean.
[laughing].
I'm not even close to, my, my, my pile isn't close to the water.
But we have some marshy stuff in the back of us.
But there's, there's tributary drain, there's potential for tributary drainage, for example, for some people.
There are things you can do.
So, oh, yeah.
Like tarp pile, manure pile, so they don't have.
Well, I also have a pile that I don't put it on my property till it's a year old. So, it's already, it's, it's already decomposed.
Let's not talk about the minutia.
Well, yeah, I know. But the point is.
No, I think it should be comprehensive when it is fully addressed. I 100% agree with you on that. Like, there should be finite clarity on how this gets addressed. Because we shouldn't be dealing with a reactive issue. Everything's going great now, wonderful, but we don't want to have to deal with it after the whole river is in a mess again.
Is there any kind of ordinance or rule that says you can have, that restricts the number of animals you can have on your property for how big your property is? I think there might be something about the number of chickens in the village. Like, where did I say that? Like, six chickens in the village, or something. But I don't, I don't even know if that's still there. I don't, I've never heard of that.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any, anything, I don't remember anything in the ordinance relative to like.
Especially roasters.
What's in the, you know, in a residential district with this, even if there's any limitations. I don't know. I haven't read anything.
If anything, I think it should be clear that the manure discussion, how it's written, is for a facility. Because I don't think that's very clear.
We're talking about 15B, correct?
Correct.
Manure storage?
Correct.
Yes, all manure storage areas.
Yes.
Yeah, all manure storage areas.
Within the shoreline.
That's going to be a setback on your, doesn't say size. It says all manure. Doesn't say how many animals.
No, and then at the end, it uses the word facility. So, I don't know if it's confusing.
I think that's referring to how you store it. Whether, and the facility could be, you know, a pen with something very, very basic. If you have one animal or, you know, a empowerment area.
Okay, so you think it generally covers 48-animal manure storage pile? You think that this generally covers a 48-animal manure pile on a piece of property?
Yeah, because it says all manure storage.
Okay. Then I feel better about it.
Yeah. What it doesn't do, if we don't cover manure storage like inland, we're, we're going to have just as much of a problem.
Right.
Adjacent to a stream.
But that we can, that we can deal with in the overall.
Well, it can't be within 100 feet of a stream or tributary. But then, and you can't, you, you can construct one within 250 feet, not within 100 feet, but between 100 and 250, right? With, as long as it produces no discharge.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
So, you'd, if you were going to put it within the shoreline zone, it has to be constructed in such a way that there's no effluent or discharge.
That's probably next.
And that means that it needs to be covered?
Well, no, ideally, yes. But for it to be no discharge, there can be no flow outside of that facility. It has to be closed.
So, it would have to be.
Contained, no runoff.
So, it would have to be covered.
There are different ways you could do it. There are different ways you could do it.
You'd have to have an empowerment area or something.
Hmm, yep.
You could have a swale around it, so it stays in a pond.
Right.
Play line thing. I mean, it could be.
Or you'd have to have, right, a section with catch strains around it or something. There's, yeah, you'd have to be.
You know, when they do house construction, they stake paybills around the perimeter to get erosion from having that. That's quite effective.
You have to do it.
So, there's different ways you could do it. Okay, so are we approving this?
Have we had, yes, Susan?
I have a question before you adjourn, if that's what you were about to do. I did not record a vote on the motion by Scott and Tara to approve the versions of Articles seven and 10 for discussion at the public hearing on August 22nd. I didn't record a vote.
That was next on my, that was next on my thing to do.
You did it? Because I thought.
I just, I just.
Oh, I thought you.
He was voting, everybody.
We're both at the same time.
So, any, anything else on this?
Put the coin on this.
All in favor of the motion? Say hi.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carried.
It's unanimous?
Unanimous.
So, you're going to send definitions to all of us? Okay.
Okay. So, action items, before we adjourn and get to comments, if any, my comments are, I have an action item. I want to email Julie to ask her, like, where are our new board members? If you haven't posted anything yet, please post something.
It's been posted.
Oh, it has been posted. Hooray.
She's.
Good. Working on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you have any recommendations, tell people.
Of course. And I will prepare written, written something, I will prepare something to, whether just talk through, or hand out, or whatever, for the meeting on the 22nd. Any other comments from anyone, anybody else, before I go to.
Yeah, sure.
The last thing, I'm guessing that you're not going to come on the 22nd.
No, my closing.
Of course, you're welcome.
I know. My closing is Tuesday.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My house is on the market for 17 hours. The first person came.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, first bid.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. It was. I'm still adjusting.
Yeah.
It's been really hard.
It's used for all the rural market.
Yep, yep. Another, I think she's a single woman from Massachusetts. So, I think she'll, I haven't met her yet. But I've really enjoyed my time on the board. I've had a really good experience. It's been really educational. So, I just thank you guys for being so supportive and patient, as we all learn and adjust. But thank you.
It takes like a year and a half, doesn't it?
It really does.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I feel like I only touched the ice, like, the tip of the iceberg. So, but thank you, guys. You guys have been wonderful.
Well, thank you. You were great.
We're very pleased to have you here.
Thank you.
And help kids in school to appreciate how the game has to work.
Oh, yes, I will.
We need that passed on. Thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Did you say 17 hours on the market?
17 hours.
Wow.
Well, feel free to always come back whenever.
Oh, I will.
Just sit in the audience and be like, I'm glad I'm out there.
Oh, wow, they're so exciting.
Actually, Washington is advertising for board members.
Yes, he said that there was a board. And I was like, no, there can't be a board in Washington. What is there to do in Washington?
They just put in a restaurant.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, no, wait, that's Jefferson.
Yeah.
No, there's, there's stuff. There's other stuff. I love Washington. It's so cute.
Beautiful.
Yeah, that is pretty. That's very nice.
With that little general store. It's nice.
Blink, and you're gone. You're out of there.
Yep.
You will find so much to do. Well.